Okay, so September 12th, 2023, Reading Planning Commission meeting called to order at 7:04. First thing on the agenda is changes to the agenda, and I have one, and that's under item 4D. There were three permits, permits, and I emailed them to everyone, and we can discuss them when that comes up, but I did want to mention that there were three permits, and I emailed them out.
Kathy?
Yes.
I'd like to put item 6 before item 5.
I don't have an issue with that.
Okay.
Anything else? Any other changes?
Item 6 before item 5.
New business before unfinished business.
Okay. And then should we have public comments after the new business and then move on to unfinished business?
We'll do, we'll do 6, 5, 7, 8, 9, 10.
Okay.
Okay. And so that brings us to item number two.
We had, we had talked about initiating public comments in two stages several meetings back.
I think we tried that, and it was kind of disastrous.
In what way?
It just sort of got out of hand, and there was, we had no time at the end for our business.
I don't remember it that way.
Okay. I'd like to move to item number two, which is to... Can we get a picture of this? Do you recognize Steve Straight? Steve, come on up. Take a look at this. How's this?
Wow. Suitable for framing, eh? It is framing.
For 35 years of service, and...
I've lost count. Is that the accurate count?
No. That's what we figured. It's 34 and something.
All right.
Close enough.
Yeah, good.
And so, yeah, we would like to send you off with that and a card for everything that you have done for all those years.
Well.
And mostly for the guidance that you continue to give.
Well, I'll be happy to keep working with you if you have questions, so.
Thank you. I appreciate it because I do need help.
It takes a while to get to that, get the hang of it.
Yeah.
Well, thanks very much.
Thank you, Steve.
Yeah.
It's been, it's been rewarding and challenging and fun, and I've met a lot of nice people, so, but you know, it's also, I think, time to pass it on to some new folks. I'm glad to see Mark and Stacy on board.
Yep.
Because I think, you know, new ideas and new energy, you know, that's kind of what I ran out of.
Thank you.
So, thanks very much.
Very much appreciated.
Thanks. Okay, number three is to approve minutes of the August 7th meeting. Do I have a motion to approve?
There were a couple of changes. There were, actually, one change that needed us to state repeatedly. It says 1,000 feet, and it should say 1,000 square feet.
In which one?
B. Well, actually, they're, they're all under the dwelling, multifamily dwelling unit section. You have 40% of total capable floor area of a single-family dwelling, or 1,000 feet.
Okay.
Should be square feet. Other than that, I don't have any other changes.
Do I hear a motion to accept the minutes with that correction?
Yes, let me make the motion.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Any disapprovals? Nope. Okay, moving on to number four, the reports, mail and email. I'm going to say we don't have any, and I know there was confusion about when the town moved things over, and apparently, any commission stuff that comes in now just goes to the town clerk, but Steve reminded me that there was a special planning commission email, and so I need to figure out with Steve again how to access that, and we'll see if there's anything there, but as far as mail goes, there has been nothing. Planning Commission, I sent everybody out late this afternoon. There was a new thing that came out about the flood hazard map in the Mark region, which includes Reading, and they're having a meeting on that. You all should have gotten that email sometime this afternoon. And we have initiated a purchase agreement to sell the buildings in Ascutney, and we will continue to rent over there. And that's about it for the Planning Commission. Kevin's not here to give a report on the Energy Board, however, there was a...
Yeah, I'm here. I'm here.
Oh, you are? Okay.
Yeah, I'm the red guy.
And I will say that I got out the blurb on the Energy, your...
Energy Fair.
Energy Fair that you're having. I sent around to everybody, so everybody has had that to look at. Sounds like you're going to have a lot of stuff going on.
Yep. So, do you want me to go ahead, Kathy?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
So, first of all, thank you, Kathy, for sending that out. We hope that there'll be quite a bit of engagement of people in the town, because in order to move forward with anything controversial, you know that you have to get as much input as possible, and this is what part of the Energy Board will try to do, is to get people to think about the way the Town of Reading wants to move forward in terms of meeting the statewide mandates for reducing our energy consumption. Anything from conservation to composting to sequestering carbon by planting trees, everything is on the table, but we are going to focus first on the solar array at the firehouse. There are three real, sort of critical buildings that are being targeted, and that one of them, of course, is the Fire and Safety and Rescue Building, and the other is the Town Library, which we hope to pursue heat pumps for, and the Town Hall, of course, is in need of a certain amount of engagement in energy conservation, so that's down the line. The fair itself will be at the Town Hall. There will be a tent for eating the free barbecue, and it will be catered by big fatties. So, that's a pretty good deal, I think. Let's see, I've been sort of taking a sabbatical for the past month, other than the Energy Committee, and I've been going over a couple of the property issues, so to speak, before Catamount Solar comes to visit the site itself and give their input. I've gotten input from a forester and a couple of people, other people, but mainly what we want to do is make sure there are no hazardous trees to impinge on any of the resources, both the solar array and agricultural efforts there. We will have a meeting with Catamount and get their input. There is input from the Fire Department on what else needs to be done, which in general brings up a good question for the Planning Commission probably to address, as the Reading Energy Board is a subcommittee of the Planning Commission. Town properties should have a management plan of some sort, and I'm not sure there are management plans for some of the town properties. I know there's a forestry plan for the town forest, and these properties, all the residents have ownership in them and can use them. Now, when you, when you look at the, I'm not sure if all of you are familiar with the property on which the firehouse is cited upon, but it's, there's a fair amount of acreage. There's an old barn there, which is stable, and that needs to be addressed. My opinion is it's a structurally sound building, if taken care of, and can be used for other town uses. It's currently used for some storage. I don't want to carry on too far into this, this whole issue of management of town property, but there are opportunities to look at things like invasive species there, wild crafting areas, wildlife corridors, and just a retrofit of the property itself, since the talc mill has owned it. They were very good tree planters. There are a lot of trees that were planted, and some of them are in some ways a threat or a liability to parts of the property, and some of the, some of them may be even a liability to the power lines at this point. This is what I got gathered from walking with the forester over there. So, I just wanted to bring you up to date on what's going on with, with the solar array. You'll, you'll have more opportunity to engage with Brian Callie and Bill Newcomb regarding how this whole thing is about to sugar off, we hope. Shovel ready? No, not there yet, so stay tuned. If you have any questions about the Energy Board or know anybody that wants to actually join, let us know, please.
Hey, Kevin?
Yes.
You said that you were working with Catamount Energy. Where are they from?
Catamount Solar. They're basically based in Randolph, Vermont. They're a, a company that's owned by the employees themselves called an ESOP, and they're very efficient in their management of time and people, so that is who came in as one of the lowest bids as well, so that's generally our thought about Catamount.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Anybody else? Question?
No.
Okay, item D, zoning administrator. I did say that there were the three permits that I emailed out to everybody, and my only comment is I was a little bit confused because one of them, I guess, two of them were what I've been used to seeing, which is the application for a zoning permit and some kind of rough draft thing, and one of them is just titled "Decision of the Zoning Administrator."
Well, they did, you go through the permit process, the application, and then the second part. So there's six emails associated with this. You have the application from the applicant outlining, outlining project, and then you have the, that form right there, which is the decision to...
This is the first time I've ever seen this form. This is what I've always seen in the past, so I was just sort of confused about why there were different forms I was getting. So maybe I just haven't been getting everything right along.
Well, I don't know if I'm not getting it. I think they may have just created a more formal approval of the application. I mean, I don't know that. I haven't spoken to anyone about this, but...
Yep.
The question for, if you have a concern or you're confused, I'd say speak to Bob Allen.
That would be a good point.
Mm-hmm.
Item E is ZBA, and there was no report, so we'll move on to new business. Item number 6A is a rotation for the Town Hall meetings, and I have been coming early all spring and summer to open up for the TV kind of thing. I do not especially like driving in the dark, particularly in the winter, and so I would like for some of the other members to rotate and commit to coming here and opening early at like 6:15 for December, January, February, and March, and I will pick it up again in April. I don't mind driving when it's light out and the weather is good. I find it difficult to commit that I will be willing to do it all through the winter.
I think we're good rotating. I'm, I'm happy to.
Okay, so we're looking at December, January, February, and then March, and there are four other members, so who wants to do December?
I'll do December.
I'll do December, before it gets way snowy here in the, starting to get out.
Kurt can do December. January?
I'll do January.
Stacy for January. February?
I will do February.
Okay, Mark is going to do February, and Kevin, that leaves you for March.
I'll dance.
Glad you like it. We can work the key. I can put it in my, in my mailbox on Bailey's Mills Road, and you can drop by and pick it up, if that's okay, and then just return it to me, and then we'll put it out the next month for the next person, and that way we'll keep track of how the key is going. But thank you for, for understanding and volunteering to take over some of that stuff for the winter for me. Next thing we want to get off the table is the election of officers, and I have been vice chair for the Planning Commission, and I would continue to take over as chair, and I don't know, I was thinking maybe Kurt might like to be vice chair for the Planning Commission?
I accept that.
Well, I think we, I can nominate you, but I have to get nominated also.
Okay. I nominate Kathy as chairman.
I second.
I'll second that, Kurt.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
No, and then Kurt for vice chair. I will nominate Kurt to be vice chair.
I will second that, Kathy.
Okey-dokey. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Kurt does vice. Okay, and then that leaves the ZBA, and we need a chair and vice chair for ZBA.
Okay.
Any nominations? Kurt, we lost you. I see your lips moving, but nothing's coming out.
Yeah, I'm trying to get rid of my daughter on the phone here. Okay, where were we? Which nomination?
We're at nominations for ZBA, Chair.
I would nominate Mark Corbin.
I will second that.
Kurt.
Okay. And vice for ZBA? Stacy?
Sure.
I will nominate Stacy Gallagher for vice chair. Any second? No second. What do we do now?
I will second. Are we, ZBA vice chair?
Yes.
I will second that.
Thank you. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed?
Aye.
Congratulations. So now we have all opposition fills, so that's very good. And Mark and, and Stacy, I don't know how, I did send out to you guys the link for the procedures and ethics thing that you can get online, and that's interesting for how to run particularly the ZBA meetings, and then there's a, there is an official script that you follow, so we would all be glad to help you should you have any questions or if something should come up. Doesn't come up very often.
Is there anyone coming down the turnpike in terms of a ZBA review, subdivision, conditional use?
Nothing. We don't get them very often. I think, as long as I've been, yes, I think as long as I've been here, there's only been two or three.
Okay.
But they're intense sometimes when they come. Plan for the October meeting, first Monday in October, is October 3rd. Is that a good time?
I may have a lot of company that week, but I'll try to make it.
Okey-doke.
So, I'm, I'm sorry, what, what was the date?
October 3rd.
So, is there a reason why we're doing Tuesday and not traditionally Monday?
Yeah, Labor Day. Labor Day was the first Monday of September?
No, no, but for October. Is there a reason why we're not doing Monday the 2nd instead of Tuesday the 3rd? We usually do the first Monday.
Yeah, because we usually do the first Monday. Did I read my calendar wrong? Is the first Monday October 2nd?
Correct, yes.
October 2nd.
All right, October 2nd. I wrote the wrong date down. That's on me, sorry.
All right.
No, it should be the first Monday, and that's what's scheduled with TV and all.
Yes.
So, Monday, October 2nd.
Yes. And I even wrote first Monday.
You're doing great, Kathy.
Jeez. Old age is all of a sudden catching up to me today.
If we had just elected you our chair.
Good point. Other business. So I have some other business. Other business is in the mess of things that I sent out, and I did, I thought I sent them out a whole lot earlier than I did, but I had messed up with the PC Core Group, and so I sent it out individually to people. And we have been talking for a while about the permit kind of things, and Kurt kept mentioning the, what Weathersfield has. So I took the Weathersfield one, and I just changed the Weathersfield to the Town of Reading, and it is a series of questions about your project, and you answer yes and no, and then whatever is the response to that, it tells you in the paragraph below what the requirements are for that. So that's one way to do it, and that would be the checklist. The other way is Weathersfield also has, which I sent to you, a list of useful contact information, and that just tells you who and the contact and maybe the people, the telephone, the, what do you call it, their web address, and what you might want to contact these different agencies for. So it's a little bit more general than the yes/no things, but it also has information, and I don't, we've just been kicking this down the road for a while, and it keeps being brought up to be mentioned as something that people who are first time filling permits maybe don't understand what they need or where to go, and if we could settle on something, and I just, I'm not wanting any kind of decision tonight. I'd just like you to look it over and see if one of those forms appeals more than others. And I also have them from different towns, but they seem to be kind of similar. But I would be happy to research. I've got Chester, and I think I got Cavendish and somebody else. So they're not for discussion tonight, but if you could just sort of keep it in the back of your mind and maybe take a glance at it and see what you think would be the easiest one to sort of follow for some, and this, you do a lot of it, okay? Most people don't do a lot of it, and what would be most helpful for somebody who's just starting something?
I think, I really think, as I mentioned in the last meeting, all of this would be very useful, an information sheet to attach to the application process initially for the applicants who haven't done it before.
Okay.
One thing I would suggest, though, is we're Reading. We're Reading, Vermont.
Mm-hmm.
This constant reference to Weathersfield and Chester and all the surrounding towns, all of their wonderful places, we're all in Reading, so maybe going forward, we don't reference other towns, and we just knowingly create a list, a worksheet for people to help them out.
Okay.
I did go through your, the two forms you sent. The list, useful contact information with all the agencies, great. I think that's very, very helpful. Then the questionnaire, I was spying with most of it until I turned the page, and then there was the applicant's acknowledgement with the conditions. That I, I think we should shy away from because we're really trying to create an informational packet, not a conditional acknowledgement.
Yeah, this has like time, things, and whatever. But it does say, you know, that you have to sort of know what the rules and regulations are, but I think that's also covered there. Anyway, that wasn't really on the agenda for discussion. I just wanted to put it out there because it is something that we had been talking about, so just if we keep it in mind, we'll put it on the agenda at another meeting, but now you have the stuff to look at. And I did mention about the Mark thing, right? The flood hazard map and bylaw. I think I sent that out to everybody.
Yes.
And that's a meeting 4:30 on Thursday, September 21st. So we got that taken care of. The other business is our budget, and I've got rough draft of things, and going by last, if you have a, this I have not sent out, and it's, we have a stipend for Recording Secretary, and that's 12 regular meetings, that's one a month, at $60 a meeting. Recording Secretary stipend of four special meetings or hearings at $60 each. Postage and extra hearing expenses was $300. Computer operator and Zoom host, eight special hearings at $60 an event. Cloud storage on the PC Gmail account was $30. And Planning Match Grant, we just came up with, however it sort of goes, it was 50% of a total match, and it came out to $783 for 2023. Maybe more or less than that. Training and seminars, $300, and a contingency fund of $350. Some of the things that maybe Stacy and Mark, we have a, we do have money for training and seminars, and most of that is through VTLC, and we belong to this, I can't remember exactly the initials, but it is the town membership that allows the less expensive rate for any classes.
Right.
Periodically, they have things that would be interesting to Planning Commission. Not often, but sometimes they do. They have a lot of stuff about land, and now it's a lot of flooding stuff and whatever. They have a lot of stuff about land and now it's a lot of flooding stuff and whatever. But if you sort of think about something that maybe we need to add or increase or something, please get back to me.
You'll send that to us?
I can. Okay. No, yeah.
I have a question regarding who on a planning commission can contact the Vermont League of Cities and Hounds for legal advice? Is it only the chair of the planning commission?
I don't know. Steve told me that I should contact them and tell them that I was vice chair and then now chair so that they would be familiar with me should I contact them.
Yeah, okay.
I don't know. The answer to that question.
It's my understanding that on the planning commission can reach out to them and ask for advice.
Yes, I've done that.
As well, I just wanted to clarify that if anybody does do that, they need to contact Kathy and tell them what the topic was.
Okay. I was not aware of them, but I will be contacting them anyway to, they send out stuff and I don't always get all of the stuff because I was not listed as, you know, like Steve would get it. And so I need to, I guess, notify them of a change and then they can send it all to me, whatever.
Yep, communication.
Yep. Anything else? Okay, now we go to Martha.
The easiest thing to start with, I think, is the purpose statement for the RR10 district. I think we have agreed on, but it just didn't have final word in the title, so. What I have here is the purpose of the RR10 district is to allow low density development on lands with significant value for forestry and wildlife management that are served by public roads. So if that's.
I agree with that suggestion.
So do we have to make a motion to adopt it or?
No, just if, you know, the sense of the board, then you're okay with this for now and before you send the entire document on to the select board, you'll make a motion.
My only question is about public roads, that designation. Just, I imagine that there are private roads within that district that also are low density, significant value for forestry. Just wondering, is there, is there a reason for that designation, public roads?
Well, this, the only thing I switched was, it used to say served by public roads with significant value for forestry and wildlife management. And since the forestry and wildlife values really refer to the land and not the roads, I just switched those two phrases.
Well, I think every, every parcel is served by a public road, whether it be state or local.
Or a private.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, a private ride is off of a public road.
Right, right.
Could you say that again? Because every parcel has frontage on a public road? Is that what the comment was?
Not necessarily, but you, the private road would come off of a public road, it's something.
Okay.
So in that sense.
There's a right of way for every single piece of property. In other words, there's no landlocked property in the town of Reading.
That's not true.
Right, well, it sounds like that's what it's saying, that there are part, I, I take Mark's comment pretty seriously. I mean, is that public roads issue something that wants to be discussed further? In other words, if I have a piece of property that's landlocked and it's an R10, does this affect low density development or does it mean I have to keep it in wildlife management? It's, okay. I don't know if you understand what I'm trying to say and sometimes I don't understand.
Yeah, I see what you're getting at, Ken. We need to provide somehow for that.
So there are parcels in this that do not have any access?
Currently. There are, there are through right of ways.
Right.
But there are, my family has a parcel that is accessed through a right of way. It's not directly on a town road frontage.
Well, there's lots of properties like that.
My property as an easement, I've got it taken to get here, but it doesn't border a public road.
My question was the purpose of the RR10. I understand the spirit of all the other, all the other factors. I'm just wondering if that are served by public roads. There are areas in RR10 that are not served directly from, by public roads, but they are meant to be low density, have significant value in forestry and wildlife management. I'm just not sure that public roads needs to be in this description.
You could take it out, you could add private roads. That's up to you.
The current one doesn't say anything about roads.
Right, that's, that was one of my thoughts, is just get rid of that are served by a public roads.
So since I don't have it up right now, the RR25 district, does that make this identical again to the RR25 district?
Seems to be that's. I guess I'm a little confused with why I'm trying to separate them.
Right. Well, why wouldn't it just be the same districts then, I guess? If they have the same purpose, should they all be in RR10? Should they all be in RR25?
That's a very good point.
Yeah. So I can switch and I can pull up a document and see if nobody else has a copy of it open and I can check and see what the purpose.
I've got the two and they are the same, but I'm not sure that that's a bad thing. Neither one of them mentions public road access.
Yeah, so my question with southern, because they are the separate districts if they have the same purpose.
Well, one's 10 acres and one's 25 acres, that's the differentiation.
Right.
I'm not sure that the purpose is actually linked to the size. It's, I mean, the rural nature of the town, a lot of this reflects. I think districts were carved out to, for all practical purposes, slow down or prevent development by having larger parcels around larger areas, larger homes. So that RR25 is, that's, that's in an area, a district of substantial properties in order to preserve those substantial private properties.
I just pulled it out. The purpose of the RC25 district is to limit growth on certain undeveloped lands in Reading, which because of their size and resource value are better suited for forestry, wildlife management and other similar low intensity uses. So it is different if you, even if you take off the public roads. It's a little different.
I think there's some differences in beyond the description and everything when you get into building and subdivision and that kind of stuff. There are some differences. But that's not for, that's not for this particular description phase of things.
So. So I think the question is, is it necessary to include a description of referencing access by public roads, served by public roads?
And if everyone is okay with that, we can just strike that.
Strike it, strike it.
I'm okay with that.
Can't get it to that.
In 50 years, somebody may not want a public road, they may want to fly in.
Okay, so home based businesses. I just put up the existing language that you have and propose some slightly good language, starting off by specifying that all home based businesses are conditional uses, which is just factual at the moment, anyway.
How many, is, if all home based businesses were permitted?
Home occupations are not only permitted, they're just allowed.
Okay.
As long as, as long as they meet the criteria, then you, you don't even need a permit for a home occupation. But that's just the individual who lives there, you know, having their own business without employees and equipment and a lot of other stuff.
And is that a state guideline of being conditional?
A home based business? No.
Okay.
So.
I would propose it not be conditional and be permitted.
In all districts?
Yeah.
How?
Does that go against that state?
Pardon?
Does that go against the state in any way?
No, I'm just thinking of your own districts and like you just discussed the purpose of, it's like the 25 acre and the 10 acre districts are for preserving natural resources and wildlife and things of that nature. And would that fit in with that purpose?
I just. Go ahead, Kurt.
I think it should be a conditional use. This is different than home occupation because you've got people that don't live there that are coming in to work. And it's not that arduous a process, but it's, it's worth looking at each time reviewing it.
Yeah, there aren't that, I mean, if somebody makes a soap product or something and what the hell? Let's know what's going on in town.
I think the other thing that I think maybe warrants the conditional uses, in the past, there have been no permits, according to Robert at one of the meetings a bit ago, that home occupations, there have been no, in his tenure, no permits actually granted. And then there are a number of considerations such as off street parking and the, number four, customer and employee vehicles. I'd like to define what is a customer, how many customers? I mean, is it a client, is it a customer? I think that that would really change the landscape depending on what sort of home based business it is. There's no, there's a limit on three additional on premise employees, but there's no limit on the number of customers.
That's a good point. I mean, what if it's really hot business and you got 60 cars there?
Right.
Oh, boy. Thank you, Mark.
I think this goes back to, you know, what are, are we a town where we want to continue creating regulations and conditions to where people feel you're breathing down their neck if they have a small business or have a home occupation that evolves into something greater?
I don't feel it's arduous at all.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, Kurt, I couldn't understand what you said.
I don't feel that it's arduous at all to keep it of conditional use and, you know, as far as the off street parking goes, they obviously have to do it on their property and it is off street. I'm not sure how you limit that. I can see a lot of situations where the neighbors and stuff would probably want to limit it. And the conditional use process gives them an opportunity to talk about that in a meeting.
Yeah, that's, that's the point. I mean, say somebody has a small business, even if they have just two or three and they make a lot of noise running their hammer drill to crush rock or something. All right, it'd be nice to have the neighbors know what's going on, wouldn't you think?
Both.
Yeah, I agree with being a conditional use though. And I have a question on, on item number three, which is to occupy an accessory structure located on the lawn or a purse, a portion of the dwelling that includes less than 50% of the total living space. Okay, that tells me something. 50% of the tot, but doesn't say anything about the size of an accessory, an accessory structure. So that could be a bazillion square feet or something. So I don't see why, why are we limiting one and not saying anything about an accessory structure? That doesn't make any sense.
Nor does it include the outdoors as a option for the business. There's no reference to the outdoors.
Well, for external storage.
But external storage might just be the equipment for the home based business, but the home based business might be an outdoor experience or an outdoor recreation where you have customers and employees doing things outside.
Riding or some similar thing?
Well, that's a very good point, a riding ring with horses. How many horses can you have on your property and how large can your riding ring be? Are we going to start trying to limit that?
No, no, I'm saying it's a.
But I think, I, I think the riding ring would be very reasonable to have a conditional use permit to understand, is the riding ring on the road? Is it within 25 feet of an neighbor? There's going to be activity, there's going to be lessons, there's going to be, I think something like that would warrant that review and that conversation with neighbors.
Right. Well, it's, you know, you put up a miniature golf or a, a sporting motorcycle track or something, you only have two people needed to monitor the whole thing. You know, you, it's hard to imagine, for me anyway, what some people are going to come up with in terms of what the next recreation craze might be. We know we have horses, we know we have a lot of cyclists and we know we have skiers, we know we have runners and these things need to be considered in terms of. these things need to be considered in terms of people's privacy in, in many respects. And the use of those roads in general, I mean, Mark, you're talking about roads a little bit here. The use of those roads are the conduit for what we consider recreation in, in this town. And should we, you know, in some way, charge a fee because the town residents are paying for their roads to be kept up and everybody's coming and
using the town roads for their benefit in many ways.
But I, I think that that's a slippery slope. I mean, the taxpayers pay for Amazon delivery vans and we are subsidizing huge corporations like Amazon to make billions of dollars a year. So I think that might be a little bit of a
I think you got me there, Mark. Okay, I'll have to back up.
Yeah, and I think public roads was brought up last night at the Select War meeting with Jenny, Jenny Road. You know, they're, like Bob Allen mentioned, it's a fifty-fifty. Do we not want leaf seekers coming up here admiring our foliage? Do we want to scare them away? You know, do we not like that revenue? I know it's, it's a hassle on some roads, as a lot of towns have experienced, but how far do you go in regulating all of that?
Well, I don't know, be close to few roads in some towns.
Think, I don't know.
Yeah, Puffret, Barnard.
Okay, that's kind of off-subject. And, you know, I'll come back to you on that, Mark. Now, that was a good one.
So could, we're back to item number three and item number four. Any suggestions for the accessory structure? For size of it, or do we just let it go the way it's written? When we say fifty percent of the total living space for a house?
The reason, just to explain the fifty percent or less, is because it's a home-based business. So the primary use would be for a home.
Then do we want to leave off the part about the accessory structure?
Well, you know, can someone have a business in their garage or their barn or, you know, I mean, that's
Their field, their barn.
Yeah, or, yeah.
Well, that's not a structure though. The field of the lawn isn't a structure. What I'm concerned about is somebody putting up an enormous airplane hangar.
Well, I don't think that would happen with this purpose.
There is an enormous structure that was put up to house certain vehicles for for business that didn't happen, but it's rather large, it's gigantic, it probably could hold an airplane.
So it already says?
Yeah, a couple army tanks. But
But I'm just wondering, does it, should it say, I mean, if it's a home-based business, does it exclusively need to occupy an accessory structure or a portion of the dwelling? Because I'm, I'm sorry, but I'm still fixated on the part about the open space.
Yep, I understand what you're saying, yeah.
So, yeah, in, in many ways, the open space might be the entire use of the property instead of a, a home or an accessory building.
Well, that could be a different type of use. I mean, that could be a recreational use for a business, which we could look at also. I mean, this is sort of meant to just define a certain type of business and what you want to see when people want to have that type of business. If you want to, you know, a lot, a lot of towns have outdoor recreation, indoor recreation as
Outdoor recreation as leisure or outdoor recreation as a business enterprise?
Doesn't, doesn't have to specify.
I think it ought to, though. I think, I think an outdoor business enterprise that, that is based at a home, you have your, you have your address, you have a parking, you have all of the tangible elements, but the actual business might be, might be capitalizing on the outdoor space.
Right. I mean, for example, a ski area or mini golf or, you know, something like that would be, you, you know, you can have an outdoor recreation that's for profit or, you know, public outdoor recreation space, hiking trails or, or the like. There's lots of different types of possible uses.
GMHA.
Right. So I don't think they all
Are they official business or are they a five oh one?
They're a nonprofit.
They're a nonprofit.
I don't think they all have to fit in this particular category. I mean, you can have, you can have other categories, is what I'm saying. And, I mean, one thing we discussed very briefly was accessory on-farm businesses. There's a new section in statute about that. You can, you can allow those, you can require site plan review, you don't have to require site plan review for accessory.
Is that the farm-to-table thing that got all messed up?
Yes.
Is that a?
I'm not sure, I didn't hear about.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, no, I, no, I mean, I think this may have happened after that. I'm not positive. But you can allow, someone who has a farm would have to meet the definition of a farm. But they could have, you know, people come and stay on the farm and have a farm experience. Or they could have weddings on the farm or, or they could, you know, with the idea of apple trees, they could create apple jam and sell apple jam. I mean, there's quite a variety
Limitless.
Of things that you could do.
So back to point three, what, what is our concern here? Are we thinking of getting rid of the fifty percent or what are we, what are we thinking?
I mean, another thing that you have in your zoning regulations right now is small business and it's not defined and there are no standards. So you're going to have to tackle that as well. And some of what you're thinking about is, you know, possibilities and what if this and what if that and you fall under that small business category as well. Which wouldn't be home-based, wouldn't necessarily be home-based, wouldn't have to be home-based. This is kind of an in-between home occupation, small business. It's just a
So could we say?
So, go ahead, Kathy.
I was just going to say, so for number three, could we word it so that the accessory structure is, is also not greater than fifty percent of the living space of the home? That would be the same space, just not in the house.
So you're saying I could type fifty percent of an accessory structure or, and/or fifty percent of the dwelling? Is that, is that what you're proposing?
A portion of the dwelling that includes less than fifty percent of the total living space or an accessory structure of the same size. An accessory structure not greater than fifty percent of the total living space of the house.
I'm just wondering, you know, the accessory structure, structure might be much larger.
That's what I'm trying to, that's what I'm trying to limit, that kind of thing.
Yeah.
So if it's, if it can't be greater than fifty percent of the total living space of the house, but you're going to have it in your six-vehicle space garage, you can only have it be the same size as fifty percent of the living space of the house. So you can have a big old garage space, but you're only going to be using maybe two parking spaces of your
So then the accessory structure would be secondary to the use of the home?
Yeah.
Yeah.
So it's a really, it's, it's a really a true home-based business.
And can you use fifty percent of your home and fifty percent of the accessory structure?
This is or, the way it's written here is or.
You can only use either or.
I guess, I, I don't know, I'm just
I think this might, yeah, maybe want to digest a little more. I actually, I think with the home, I, I understand the point is that the home is used primarily for a home and then second, secondarily for a business. It could be very easy to just take a home and turn it one hundred percent into a business. I'm just wondering, you know, an accessory structure.
Yeah, I'm thinking it's like if you got a home-based business and, and you're selling strawberry jam and you put it out in your mudroom, okay, that's clearly fifty percent. But if, if I go into a massive production, what's the limit? If I build them a big garage and I increase it from strawberry to strawberry and apple, and then what? I'm going to need more space.
You know, at some point, we're talking about home-based businesses here. There's other things like commercial businesses, commercial projects, and that should be addressed in a different spot.
I think that what Mark just mentioned, it's, it's in the small business side.
Right. Which is not currently well-defined, so you're, we'll have to tackle that. And this does limit, you can only have three additional on-premise employees.
But it doesn't, my biggest number four is about the customers. It doesn't put any sort of limit on, you know, customers. So you can have three employees, you can have a couple parking spaces, you can have the fifty percent use of the home, but you have a hundred people coming, descending on this home-based business.
Right. I mean, it is a conditional use and that would be one of the things that you could put a condition on. I mean, generally, one of the things you look at with conditional use is, you know, the impact on the neighborhood, the impact on traffic. If you have a hundred people coming and going on a little residential road, that's going to have, I mean, I think most people would agree that that would have an impact on the neighborhood and the roads and the traffic. So at that point, in a conditional use decision, you could say X number of customers per, you know, at a time. No more than.
There's just some elements of this that somebody might go more in that true commercial direction than what we understand as a home-based business.
I mean, you, you can, you could have fewer employees, you could, you know, you can be more specific if, if you want. And then allow more, you know, less just with the small business, allow more options. I mean, I think one reason for conditional use is because you can anticipate every possible use that someone might come up with and you want to be able to set limits like, you know, like you're breaking up, you don't want a hundred customers at a time.
All right, can we move on?
So just in terms of moving on, does that mean we're tabling this and then we're going to?
Well, I don't think we have any true definition of what we're, what we're looking to achieve here.
Okay. I think we're trying to achieve consistency in, in the difference between home-based business and larger-type operations. Is that incorrect?
I, I would, I would agree, yes. I think we all have this idea of what we know would be a true home-based business. It's just that there's a lot of elasticity sometimes with some of this wording that might come back to bite us.
I think there's data in there.
Yeah, so this is a conditional use. Martha said we could put conditions on some of these, this verbiage, so to speak. And there's always semantics and wordsmithing and stuff like this when it comes to getting to move forward on a little bit of this project we're trying to do. I don't know, Kathy.
Yeah, I don't know. I'm looking at the, at the original four point nine, the home-based business. And it's to be carried on by the owner with not more than three additional on-premise employees. And then not having external storage for supplies or equipment visible from adjacent highway or dwelling unit, except for the outdoor parking of two business vehicles and employees' vehicles. And three provide off-street parking for all vehicles. I agree with that, so we've got that in four. I would agree with adding number five that Martha suggested, which is comply with the signage, which is not in the one that we presently have. And that just leaves the number three, I guess. We, that's the only one, if we add, I, I don't see any objection to the signs and provide off-street parking. And that would be under the, under the conditional permit that somebody would have to come in and tell us about their parking and where they're going to put cars and how many cars they think they're going to have, whatever, whatever. And it says here about, you know, the outdoor parking for two business vehicles and employee vehicles, that pretty much defines that, and then off-street parking for everything. The only thing that I'm hung up on is the number three, and that's an accessory structure, which wasn't addressed in the original four point nine. And I don't know why we're discussing it now.
I don't either.
So can we just strike number three? Unless we want to put in the part about and just leave out about accessory structures and put in that it will not use more than fifty percent of the dwelling total living space.
Yeah, and it could be in an accessory structure that way. Is that what you're thinking is? I mean, say your house, say your house is three thousand square feet, which is a pretty sizable house, actually, in these days of energy usage, I'll get that in there. And you have fifteen hundred square feet to work with. You have five hundred in your house and a thousand feet in an accessory building.
That's why we'll strike the accessory building.
Well, why not have a thousand, if you're, if you can have fifty percent of your total living space accounted for in a home-based business, what's the dealio? Can't you have five hundred in your home and a hundred or a thousand in an accessory building?
Yeah, I don't know why we would limit it to the man, the
Because it's a home-based business.
Yeah, but the barn, a barn is part of a property that's a home-based occupation business. And barns are sometimes four, five, six, seven times the size of the dwelling.
Then the portion of the accessory building should not be greater than fifty percent of the total living space of the dwelling.
In the home, in the home.
Of the home.
Of the home.
Yes. So if they have a barn that has a billion square feet, but their fifty percent of their home, their dwelling space is a thousand square feet, then they can only use a thousand square feet of their humongous barn?
That's right. That's how I would go it.
So can we do that? Can we word it that way?
I agree with that.
Fifty percent of the square footage of the house. It doesn't have to be in the house. It could be in the house or in, or in an accessory structure. But the total square footage is fifty percent of the house?
Yes.
That's what you're saying?
Yep.
Yeah, yeah.
It's your, it's your, they're your zoning regulations, so. It's your, it's your, they're your zoning regulations, so.
I like it. Correct, correct?
Yeah.
Kevin?
I'm okay.
I, I'm not, I, I can't get my head around this one right now. I can't, I can't, I can't see it. I'm just thinking, some, some person has a barn that can be used, existing barn, they can only use 500 square feet of it, I just...
Defies the whole definition of agriculture, barns, why, you know, they litter our landscape in a great way, so why would we start limiting? Somebody wants to build a beautiful barn.
Does anyone have a business in the barn the next time they come in for, you know, more understanding of what a home-based business is? And a business?
And I think that's the crux of it.
So it's really number three?
Many of the farms are exempt from permits anyway.
Yeah, there's silver culture rules.
Yeah, there are rules where you can, all you need to do is present a very uncomplex sketch of what you propose to do in terms of agricultural and forestry, as long as you're within setback limits. You do not have to have a, pay for a permit.
Or if it's an agricultural use, if it qualifies as a farm structure, you know?
Right, and it may end up being that you have to make $1,000 or file a Form F so that you can, you know, legitimately say that this is a farm structure.
That's sort of what we went through up there with that proposed sugar operation on Newton Road.
Yeah, well, that's industrial agriculture.
Okay, it's number three that there's not really agreement on. Every, is everyone okay with the other provisions of this?
I just think there probably should be some sort of, there should be some sort of limit to the number of customers. If there are three employees, how many customers would be there?
Provide off-street parking for up to X number of vehicles?
Sure.
You know, with that. We have that somewhere in one of the other regulations. Can't call it right now.
I mean, there's parking regulations which...
It's just that number one doesn't even mention customers. So a home-based business be carried on by the residents of the premises and not more than three additional on-premise employees who are not residents, but it doesn't say anything about serving the number of customers, but yet we have customer parking. So I think that, that's, that's what I'm concerned with in terms of, if you have three on-premise employees, you could be serving each, each employee, there's four, five, and then if it's based on the people that run it, let's say it's a couple, five employees serving 25 people.
Uh, I, uh, I would agree that that is a questionable part of the language here in terms of customers. So if you wanna put a limit on, say, no more than five, 10 parking spaces available for customers, I'm, I'm good with that.
Yeah, I wouldn't have a, a problem with that either, and I'm just thinking of some of the home-based businesses, and I'm, I'm thinking about people who do goat soap and the people who do yarn. And I must say, I don't ever see a big traffic jam around their businesses, you know? Maybe there's one or two cars every now and then, but I don't see everybody jam-packed tying up the, the roads.
Well, you know, these home-based businesses probably are gonna end up going through Amazon anyway, or actually not, but they're gonna sell stuff online and just pack it out of there. I mean, if you're up in, if you're up in Brown Schoolhouse Road and have a home-based business, who's gonna drive up there and say, "I wanna park here" and drive stuff? I mean, it's, everybody has a different business model, I guess, but, I'm just commenting on that.
So the concern is parking for a number of customers?
I'm concerned with just the definition of how many, we know what a customer or a client is, how many customers or clients will be there at any given time for a home-based business? This isn't just, you know, like a cottage industry where somebody is on-site producing the yarn. They're selling, they could be selling the yarn, they could be having a pop-up shop, they could be having, you know, regular hours. How, how many people will, will come?
Well, I think that it could be, I mean, there's so many different varieties, like maple syrup sales during foliage, fall foliage. I'm sure those businesses have a spike in their number of customers during that time period. So how are we going to regulate that? In an industry that's been here forever, you know, like they're going to Jenny Farm and saying, "You have, you can't have more than 10 customers here, but I make 90% of my volume in a six-week period."
I just think that, you know, they get the special designation of agriculture, forestry, and, you know, God bless Vermont, we can do what this happened, and that's good. But a home-based business where something else is being produced or consumed, that's, that's just, that's what I'm wondering.
I'm thinking of the places too where you can get maple syrup and eggs, and they put them in a cooler at the end of the driveway, and you take what you want and leave your money.
Oh, that's, that's, that's easy. They don't need, they don't need this, they don't need...
But that's a home-based business too.
Right.
They're up there feeding the hens and tapping the hens, whatever. But they don't all, and, you know, if you wanna stop and buy the eggs and pull over in this driveway and take your eggs, leave your money and go. But if you wanna put some kind of a, a limit on it, off-street parking, it seems as though for a home-based business, it's usually not a, a really big place, and who wants their front yard to become a parking lot?
Yeah, I'd propose just putting in no more than five customers' parking spaces, something like that.
Business resident, customer, and employee vehicles. Will we address the... Didn't we address up front about parking for home people? Additional three, so we need three parking places, and you want five for customers?
Well, let's put something in there for now. What do you say?
That would be 10 parking spaces, maybe, eight to 10 parking places.
Well, that's pretty hefty for just somebody, you know?
but if you have your three employees, okay, who want residence, and then you have five customers, that's eight parking places, and then it's the, the people, do the people who live there need a parking place too? Do we count them in? So?
No, I don't think we do.
And then are you generalizing between a village resident and a house on 300 acres?
I'm not. I've got three vehicles and two of us. So I might be right out of the running for starting a business. But do you wanna put another one?
I propose that Mark does homework on this and comes back with a proposal for next meeting.
That sounds like a good suggestion.
Then I will do a homework assignment if I'm figuring out the dwelling situation.
You go. And if you come up with something, you can just email us before the next meeting. The next page, you also wanna revise the accessory structure language as you discuss. I think so. And I think like the addition of the sign stuff.
Maybe some other members of the committee should look into that with different, some different wordings and configurations of the, how we want to differentiate living space versus accessory use.
I put my idea up, well, that was my idea. Anybody else wanna tackle number three?
I don't wanna define living space because it's too difficult, but...
Well, you did...
I'm not, I'm not gonna volunteer for that.
We, we have already defined
Done that.
Living space, yes.
Yeah, okay.
You can, you can definitely come back to this and debate it again in the future. Nursery, commercial greenhouse. You use the term in the document, I believe it's a conditional use in all districts, but there was no definition, so I'm proposing nursery means all lands, premises, and buildings on or in which nursery stock is grown, transported, or offered for sale. Nurseries are subject to regulation by the agency, agriculture, and courts with 6 E.S.A., Chapter 2 of 6.
Works for me. It gives a definition of it, which...
And nurseries are very regulated by the state.
Yeah, exactly.
Multi-unit dwellings, last time you agreed to just leave them as conditional use. The only change you made was to accept the definition provided in Act 47, but there was someone here who had a question about the Act 47 language, so that's why I provided it here, but I don't see that gentleman here, so.
Was that Ray?
Yeah, that was Ray.
Oh, okay. Well, you know, Ray comes to a meeting, he's the alternate, let's listen to him and maybe put that in there. Can we reference that somewhere?
This is in response to his question, I believe, right, Mark?
Yeah, this is from Act 47, so...
Right, but nobody's gonna, not everybody is gonna know what Act 47 says in reference to this, this part of the zoning bylaw.
This is, this is what Act 47 says.
Right, but is it going to be part of the language in the, in our...
No, it's...
Why not?
Well...
No, but I mean, can it be referenced with an asterisk or a footnote and said, "C V S, C 20, C footnote number seven," or whatever it might be?
So, um, if I'm remembering correctly, what he said was that multi-family dwellings have to be connected to public water and sewer. And I disagreed with that. So I was providing the specific language, which, which just says that if you have public water and sewer, then multi-unit dwellings have to be a permitted use if they have four units or less.
All right, I, I guess I'm just arguing a sort of a moot point, but I mean...
So you're not changing your zoning at all?
No, no.
For what it is now?
Well, I don't wanna make a book out of the whole thing either.
Well, it can, I, I like Kevin's idea of just referencing...
What this says?
Yeah, if we can just put a footnote.
Well, I'm just concerned that might be more confusing because you don't have public water and sewer, and it's saying that if you do have public water and sewer, then multi-unit dwellings are permitted use, so...
Well, let's get with some sort of waters program in this, never mind.
Someone might say...
Yeah, I understand. I, I, yeah, that, that does, now that you mention it, it does create confusion because we do not have a municipal sewer and water infrastructure.
Well, my point is, if you reference it, it'll make people start thinking about the issue of having clean water and clean wastewater, what they call wastewater, anyway. But I'll go with what you folks wanna do with that verbiage, and that's to leave it out, I guess.
Yeah, I was just providing it as a reference to, to answer his question.
Right, 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 well. The question will come up again.
Yeah, and in the definition, it does provide it in, in Act 47, and if anybody's that interested, I guess they could look up and see what 47 is.
Right, all you have to do is, yeah, okay, sorry about that. Everybody can use their computer.
Maybe.
So, probably I should explain the things that are in blue in here, just me explaining where I'm coming from basically on each of these issues, so.
Yeah, thank you, Martha, thank you.
For accessory dwellings, you did discuss this last time, and I'm providing the language, again, the change from Act 47, which says, "No bylaw shall have the effect of excluding as a permitted use one accessory dwelling unit that is located within or pertinent to a single-family dwelling on an owner-occupied lot." That was new language. Um, you had some conversation last time about proposed new language, owner occupancy, short-term rentals. So I provided the current language, 4.11, 4.12, and then the proposed new language again, which is what I shared with you last time. And I meant to put in a definition for owner occupied, but it looks like I forgot to do that, but I can, I can send that out.
And that is defined in?
Owner occupied is not actually defined in state statute.
It's not, so why are we trying to define it here?
Because they're gonna make an accessory apartment and make a short-term rental about it, about it, and there will be no one to, uh, no one to live in this town.
That, that was what we were getting at, and I think it's important to say, owner occupied lot, period.
So I guess the question I have regarding that is, what happens if someone's circumstances change and they can no longer live in their property in Redding and they're forced to rent it out?
They should rent it out as a long-term rental.
So now we're going to have on people's properties, we're going to formally have deed restrictions. So Redding is going to be in the business of putting a deed restriction on any home with an accessory dwelling unit that, that must be owner occupied because also in looking through some legal language, owner occupied means that that owner needs to declare that their primary residence is at that home.
Right.
So all of the second homes will not be able to rent in any capacity any of their property. Because I believe that, you know, I believe that... Because I believe that, you know, I believe that there is a tax break, you know, through a homestead exemption that is a you know, a tax incentive for people to declare their primary home. So they are getting some benefit from the state in terms of their taxes, secondary, second home properties are not.
Right.
So the state's intention is to create more accessory dwelling units.
Exactly.
Without probably having heard from a lot of people about the impacts that short-term rentals can have, they did specify that if it's on an owner occupied lot, it has to be a permitted use. That doesn't mean you have to, has to be on an owner occupied lot. Just, you know, it could be on a non-owner occupied lot, but then maybe make it a conditional use. It's just saying that.
But are we defining, are we defining, or does the state of Vermont define that owner occupied means that their primary dwelling is this home that we're speaking about? Or does that just simply mean that if somebody owns their property, they need to live in that, in that house, and then they can have a second? Is it just owner occupied to mean that they are on site? And they are occupying and living in their home within ADU, or does it mean that they must be a permanent resident of the state to be classified as owner occupied?
Well, you know, I wish I would have found a definition that the state provided. As far as I know, they haven't provided the definition owner occupied, other than potentially through the tax department, like you said, which wouldn't be, probably be a definition that's about this long, covering all kinds of different situations.
And that was back to my question of asking, does the state have owner occupied language? And she said no.
Well, in the land use regulations.
In the, with accessory dwellings?
Correct. To my knowledge, they haven't provided a definition for that particular use of the term. With the tax department, it's my sense that they probably do. I mean, they, you know, if you're gonna get the benefit of paying resident taxes as opposed to non-resident taxes, you know, they've got to be able to determine who is a resident and who's not a resident. I mean, I think it typically has to do with living here fifty percent of the year plus one day, you know, but they have other criteria, I'm sure. Which wouldn't, you know, if you use something similar, it ties to being here three hundred and sixty-five days out of the year.
Is the state going to be, if the goal is to make accessory dwelling available for full-time renters, there must be some sort of program within the state that is trying to make these ADUs, quote-unquote, affordable, and are they providing tax relief in terms of reductions in property taxes or an income, like an income tax credit, or anything of that sort? I mean, is there going to be rent control? Is there going to be?
I'm not as familiar with all the rest of Act forty-seven, it's, you know, quite one, but they do have a lot of things that they've created, you know, grants and loans and study committees and all that, that also have to do with housing. But I'm just not as familiar with.
Well, this may be a good part, because in the last meeting, I said I would look into accessory dwelling unit grants, and which I have, and the state does provide a fifty thousand dollar grant, and there are conditions. If you, let's say, turn a garage into an apartment, you can apply for up to fifty thousand dollars to do whatever's necessary to turn that into an apartment. But they have, you have to be rented out for five years. You have stepped terms in which you can, the maximum you can charge. Woodstock has a similar, I put a call into Jill earlier today, I haven't heard back from her. They have a ten thousand dollar grant available for the Woodstock, South Woodstock, Reading, Bridgewater, Pomerano. And if you do an accessory dwelling unit, it's staged, it's not very complicated, but you can get twenty-five hundred dollars, five thousand dollars, six thousand dollars, up to ten thousand dollars. But you have to be enrolled in the program for a period of two years, and you can't charge more than, I think it's a thousand dollars for a studio, fifteen hundred dollars for a one-bedroom, and twenty-five hundred dollars for a multi-bedroom facility. And then, you know, what happens after the two years or after the five years, you know, that's to be determined. But those are the two grants that I could wrap my hands around since we discussed it at the last meeting. Now, tax incentives.
And it's probably something that goes on to, it's, I don't know the legal term of it, but like some sort of, some sort of deed or protective covenant that goes, so if, but if you're not compliant, then I imagine that you have to pay to wear that.
Agreed.
Okay.
Yeah, there wouldn't be a deed restriction or covenant. I think that'd be very hard to do.
And have there been any studies in terms of, you know, within, let's say, Windsor County, how many people are looking for housing and whether people will come this far out of the Upper Valley in terms of living and commuting?
From what I've read, I believe that's one of the reasons why the EDC and Woodstock spiraled out, and instead of it just being Woodstock, South Woodstock, they went into Bridgewater, Pomerano, Reading, so that they could increase the radius.
And there is a study, it's called Keys to the Valley.
Keys for the what?
Keys to the Valley. And I have some of their statistics at home, I was on their committee, and I might, could bring those the next time that you address it, or I can email them out.
Yeah, that'd be great, but I'm sure it's.
Woodstock, maybe you have to be working in Woodstock.
It's it's not necessarily in Woodstock, but in the area. But, I mean, for a property owner who wants to create an accessory dwelling, and I think the obvious thing would, would be to, you know, go with the state program.
There's also a state booklet on ADUs, and I can send out the link to that.
Thank you.
The other question I had was number three, four point one. Is the total floor area of the attached apartment shall not be more than a thousand square feet, and forty percent of the total living area? I'm just doing a little research in this Vermont state statute, they use, the metrics that they use are the accessory dwelling does not exceed thirty percent of the total habitable floor area of the single-family dwelling, or nine hundred square feet, whichever is greater. So for a three thousand square foot house, that would be nine hundred square feet.
This is one of the rare instances in which the state allows the towns to be less restrictive than the state.
Okay, okay.
If you scroll down to the bottom of that section, right above the section, says nothing in this subdivision shall be construed to prohibit a bylaw that is less restrictive of accessory dwelling units, or a bylaw that regulates short-term rental units distinctly from residential rental units, so.
This had been brought up by Steve before, I believe he was questioned, and he said the Reading in the planning committee had decided to be a little more liberal with a thousand square feet and the forty percent versus being more strict, more limiting like the state.
I'm just wondering, ADUs, I mean, is there research that, you know, would, would a small family that might need more than two bedrooms, a thousand square feet would be, I think at maximum, probably two bedrooms? Is there, is there any sort of movement to have, you know, three bedrooms is more family oriented, whereas a lot of, a lot of the new units and apartments that are being built are, you know, studios, one bedrooms, two bedrooms, but that doesn't, that doesn't allow for a family unit, a larger family unit to.
Well, if you want to have bunk beds.
They'd be small bedrooms, but you could, I think you could probably do three bedrooms in that, I mean, that's it doesn't, it used to, I believe it used to say studio or one bedroom in the ADU, and that language is cut out, so they're not limiting the number of bedrooms. That's, you know.
Well, another restriction would be if they do that, they've got to have their water and wastewater permits for the larger bedrooms.
Yeah, that's exactly true, because there's a very clear distinction with your wastewater between a two-bedroom, a three-bedroom, and a four-bedroom.
But if you're already going to be going to the cost to upgrade your septic system, it's probably in the cards for most properties, if you're going to be adding another two-bedroom accessory dwelling, most people don't overbuild their septic systems.
I did.
I did.
Pioneers.
So we're good with number three? That's actually the original language. The new language starts with section four point one.
So, and just, just the other question is, you know, we have the glossary that we're redefining owner occupied as?
Let me switch over to.
I know when there was so much discussion around short-term rentals, the only the only parameters were that that person needed to, the owner needed to be onsite if they were going to do a short-term rental, so I think we were referring to that as owner occupied, but.
We need a definition?
I'm still not comfortable with the owner occupied language if the state doesn't include it. I think we need to keep in mind circumstances change with people. You start defining it, and you just, you start really restricting, you have to have a way to police it, and I think it's a downward spiral.
I think we're up against the economics of short-term rentals when it comes to accessory buildings.
I, in other towns, that's a correct statement, I don't believe it's the case in, in Reading.
Well, it will be.
Well, here's a possible definition for owner occupied. Used as the primary residence of the person owning title to the property, who must inhabit the residence more than fifty percent of the year, and must be eligible to declare the property as a homestead for Vermont property tax purposes.
And in order to declare it as a homestead, you need to be a registered voter in that town.
Yep, so all they do is check the grand list.
So, so a place like Woodstock that has very specific short-term rental ordinance and regulations, all of their, all of their rentals are owner occupied according to that definition? No, that's, I couldn't imagine that many year-round residents.
This would be, this would be saying that anyone who has a single-family residence on an owner occupied lot can have an accessory dwelling unit as a permitted use. Doesn't, the short-term rental part of it is a separate thing that you can, except for not.
Right, right.
You don't necessarily have to rent it out at all, you can have a family member there. And then, and again, you know, you could allow them as conditional use if the person does not occupy, you know, it's not owner occupied. It's not saying you can't allow them, it's just saying that if it's owner occupied, you have to allow them. We can go, so the definition, do we want to add that to the definition in the glossary? That's up to you, just proposing it as an option.
Let's put it in there and have other people look at it, I mean, yeah. It's my opinion.
To look at what then?
The definition.
Definition?
Yeah, put, put as many definitions as you can before, you know, we complete this project.
Okay, all right.
It can always be changed, and they will be, I can assure you of that.
And probably in another few years, we're gonna be doing this again. Okay, Stacy just pointed out, we only have ten minutes left. And is this a good place to stop? Or do we need to move, there's a little yet, so. How many more things are there? Let's stick more items on that one thing. You only have the property, may it occupy, is a single-family dwelling or accessory unit? Not located on a special flood hazard. That makes sense. Neither the single-family home nor the accessory dwelling is offered as a short-term rental. And number six, all applicable requirements of these regulations and the dimensions of the zoning district in which the ADU is located on that.
Six, no issues, but five is a local conversation.
Okay, so we want to pick up with with the four point one accessory dwelling units, we need to still further discuss item number one and five. Is where we're gonna pick up next time? Four point one. We don't have any, any issues with number two? Maybe attached or detached, but only one dwelling per unit lot? We good with that?
I am.
Yep.
Yeah. Number three, the owner of the property may occupy either the single-family dwelling or the accessory unit?
And that sort of ties in with the conversation about owner occupied and number one.
Well, this just further says he can live wherever he wants. We can live in the little one, rent out the larger one, whatever. So that's not an issue, I don't think, with anything. So that just leaves us with looking at the definitions, parents, number five. Be discussed next time. Be discussed next time. Hey, couple comments? No comments? Motion to adjourn?
So just before we adjourn, I just, did I fulfill the questions about the grants? Do I need, I think the next step with that would be for us to identify potential. Property owners who may, who may benefit from those grants.
Oh, we can put, you can put something out and get it.
Um, that's a good idea, okay.
There may be some people who maybe were looking at it and simply don't have the fun.
Well, it came up in conversation because Jean had mentioned that she knew of three or four people in the village who might benefit from it. But they didn't have the. Lack of better words, wherever all to. So I think if we can be a little proactive.
Yeah, sure.
We can solve some of the.
And I think the best thing would be to have, get it to cholesterol and or put it in the.
Great.
Yeah, I I have one thing to say, um, here, and that is to encourage you. To help support the Reading Energy Board and attend the. Energy. Uh, event. This weekend. Pardon me?
Do we get to drive an electric car?
Yeah, there will be electric car, uh, cars there, uh, there will be e-bikes, uh. E-lawn mowers, you name it, we've got it.
The tiny wheels for those bikes?
Pardon me? No, no, no. If you can ride your horse, I think you can ride this e-bike.
I don't know, they speed differently.
Well, we'll get a little bell that makes a whinny, okay?
So who motion to adjourn?
Uh, who motion?
Yes, motion to adjourn.
I.
Monday of September. In that, we're going to, October.